You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Good evening, like to welcome everyone to the Monday, March 23rd, 2015 Fayetteville City Council Meeting and ask Pastor Goodman from the Cliftdale Christian Center to come forward, please. If you would, after the invocation and the pledge, hang out for just a minute and tell us a little something about your mission over there.
Will do, will do.
Would everyone please rise, please, for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Let us all bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you, God, and we acknowledge you in this place and we give you honor. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for being here with us. And Father, we ask right now, in the name of Jesus, for your wisdom, God. Father, and not just your wisdom, but God, your courage, God. Let our faith be a faith that has action, that, God, we would not merely be hearers of your wisdom, your word, but, God, that we would also be doers, that we would go forth and that we would accomplish. Father, I speak your wisdom in the name of Jesus over our mayor, over our city council. Father, I thank you, God, that we are residents of our hometown, God, this city Fayetteville, that you have blessed us, God, to be members of this community, Father. And, God, we just, we offer up to you all that we have and we say, "Take us and use us tonight, Lord." Father, we give you all praise, all glory, and all honor. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Tell us something about the Cliftdale Christian Center.
Well, sir, Cliftdale Christian Center, we're a multiracial, multi-denominational congregation, charismatic and very involved in our community. As we've talked about in the past, we helped spearhead the As One Prayer Walk, which is coming up in April. But one of the things that I'd really like to mention tonight is Renaissance Classical Christian Academy. We are one of the only classical Christian academies in our region and I'd like to boast for just a moment and say, two out of three years, it is one of our students that will represent this nation in our national spelling bee. And so that is a very, very good thing. And I want to thank you too for inviting me to come out.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you for worshiping here in our city. Have a few announcements and a couple of recognitions. I guess the first is an announcement and a recognition. The world is safe. Our Mayor Pro Tim and Councilmember Jensen have successfully completed the marathon this past weekend. So, half marathons. So, yeah, they're wearing their, what do you call those things? Medals around the neck, their trophies.
Their heads are hanging, it's that medal.
Their shot put discs.
If I'd have known they were giving out those medals, I might have been out there.
Mr. Crisp, you probably could have beat them too. I passed them along the route. I saw those guys. I was not running, I was riding, by the way. Also, the Jack Britt Wrestling Team, are you here? Stand up. I don't know, because I think you're coming back for further recognition, but I want to recognize you, especially with all the Terry Sanford students in the audience who are going to be recognized in just a minute. But Jack Britt, of course, everyone knows, has won the 4A State Championship for wrestling. So congratulations.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Voe.
Can we get the young man's name? I think I work with his dad.
Joseph Stevenson?
Yep, I work with your dad, Pat.
Y'all don't wrestle at work, do ya?
Oh, he's bigger than me.
Okay. All right. And I do think we have some certificates for you at the next council meeting, so look forward to you guys joining us again. Terry Sanford. Where are you?
He's going to bring him in, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Do we have to play their entrance song? Listen, they can look cocky. They earn that. Coach Boyett, if you'll join me over here.
All right.
Who let the dogs out?
There you go.
Had to be Mr. Arp out there, didn't it?
Mr. Arp, what's that on your head back there?
Mr. Mayor, I'm proud to display the hat of Terry Sanford High School.
So, you know, of course, we invited the team here to give some special recognition, you know, as you guys have done for this community over the past couple of weeks or past couple of months, really, as you've played. Congratulations on your 3A State Championship win. And I'm going to present Coach Boyett with a certificate and then I would ask him to individually recognize you with certificates as well, and I will assist with him handing those out. So, Coach, your certificate reads, "A Certificate of Recognition to Coach Bill Boyett for Winning the Boys 3A State Basketball Championship. Your team's championship victory is a source of great pride in the local community. Everyone shares in the sense that your team has aimed high, worked hard, and won. We congratulate you on your tremendous accomplishments."
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
First of all, just like to tell you how honored we are to be here. I don't want to take a whole lot of time up, but it is a great honor, Mayor Robertson, for us to be recognized tonight here at the city council meeting. And we've just had great support throughout this entire year. This is a very deserving basketball team here, a hard-working team. They believe in each other, they believe in what we do. And there were times this year that a lot of people, you know, might have doubted us during this journey, but at the same time, these guys truly believed. We played with a lot of confidence and just very proud of them, the way they've represented Terry Sanford High School and the way they have represented this community. And for those of you that were watching us on TV, and we've had a lot of comments, thank you so much for being there for us, the community of Fayetteville, and we truly appreciate your support and what you mean to this town, and we're awfully proud that we can represent here tonight. So, thank you very much. I'm going to recognize the players individually. We do have, and when I get to them, we got one out sick tonight, unfortunately, but anyway, I thought we did good to get them all here. Paris, by the way, is a senior and he'll be attending Wake Forest University next year on a football scholarship. Junior Shimon Elliott. Junior and the most valuable player of the state championship game, Mark Gilbert. Senior Logan Hales. Junior Johnny Hughes. And his brother, sophomore Taligence Johnson. Junior Justin King. Unfortunately, the next young man is sick tonight. That was Senior Joseph Riddle. Senior, I'm sorry, go ahead. Senior Trey Sidbury-Williams.
You sure you're on this team?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we got it. Congratulations.
Thank you. Junior Isaiah Stallings. And Senior Anthony Stokes. Also, we brought with us tonight one of our assistant coaches, and he was also the head JV coach, that's Mr. Josh Hayes. And my other assistant coach, Doug Yen, is also the golf court coach, excuse me, and he had a golf match tonight, so he could not be here with us as well. But thank you so much for having us, Mayor Robertson. It's a great honor for us to be here and thank you for recognizing us at the city council meeting. It's a great honor.
Good job.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks a lot for having us. Mr. Hurst, would you tell us about your activities this weekend with Fayetteville Beautiful?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate the 643 who participated in cleaning up our city, making it cleaner and more beautiful, especially for our 82nd Airborne members of the Sergeant Audie Murphy Club, as well as the military police group from the 42nd of the 503rd that came out as well, and many of the churches and schools. We appreciate your attendance. We don't have the count of the tonnage of trash that was picked up this past Saturday, but anyway, it was a tremendous success and we appreciate the city's support as well. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst, and for all the volunteers from Fayetteville Beautiful. It's another great asset for this community. Thank you for your hard work on that. Would, at this point, like to recognize Councilmember Kathy Jensen, who is going to have a special recognition, and tell us about her activities over the past couple of weeks.
I've been very busy, very busy. At the January 12th, my fellow council members, four or five of us went to Washington, D.C. and we had a kind of the starting of our youth council, where we took 19 children from our youth council to help us get accredited for our new council that we've started. I just kind of wanted to recognize the people that really made this happen, you know, the liaison group that the mayor put together when he got elected. We'd like to thank the Cumberland County Commissioners, the city of Fayetteville, and the school board that got together and allowed us to start this great group, that we took 10 children from every public high school, five from the private schools, and 10 from the homeschools. So, anyway, behind me, we have some representatives of our youth council. We're averaging, our first meeting, we had about 120 kids. But these kids got to go to Washington and they got to meet their senators, they got to meet President, well, they got to see President Obama on the ninth row. They got to go to the Capitol, they had a private tour, they got to go out on the balcony, like the president does the day he's inaugurated, and not everybody gets to do that. Our senator set that up for them. I've spent a good three days with these children and we all need to be very proud and look very forward to our future because these are our new leaders. And they took it and they did what they needed to do, and I never heard a complaint. I never heard a complaint. And they were up at 7:00 in the morning. I think Crystal had them up in the morning at like 6:30 to see the president so they could be on the ninth row. But I would like to bring Crystal and Barbara, and I know Brian's here, is the other Brian here? If y'all could come up, I'd like to present them, myself, with a coin from everyone. Crystal is the lead on our youth council and I would like everybody to give her a hand. She has done remarkable things. I had the privilege, the children asked me to go to a breakfast with them where there was local officials and we all sat at our own table as a local official and all the kids. There was over 200 kids at this conference all over the nation. And at the end of our time, of our meeting, it was amazing, the people and the elected officials from other states came to me and said, "How did you do this? Can I have your phone number? Can I have your card?" The people from Louisiana have already reached out. Two of our children are going to be on that task force to get the whole state of Louisiana started on a youth council. I get to be part of that, and of course, Crystal's going to be a big part of that. She doesn't know that, but she's going to be helping me with that. So, I just want to let you know that great things are happening. We started in November. The kids have gone to Raleigh this weekend, another set of kids went to Raleigh this weekend, too. So, first of all, I'd like to give Crystal a coin and thank you for all that you did for us, and she is a true treasure for us. Ms. Barbara is new to her position and she came along and she helped with everything. We went bowling, we went out to dinner, and I would like everybody to know that the city manager did come out to dinner with us and did go bowling with us. And I think he, I think Dorian beat him and then he was in second place. And we had two Bryans, this is Brian number one, they drove for us, and we had two vans that went up there and they tackled DC traffic. And when we realized that we might need to regroup, and I was talking to the city manager and I was like, "We're thinking about the metro," and he said, "They need to learn how to do the metro." And we went and we all learned it and it was great, and it was the kids making sure we were where we needed to be the second night, I think it was. And Brian and Brian came right along, never complained, so I wanted to give him a coin. And we have one for the other Brian that you can give. And I think that Dorian and Troy have a little presentation or a little something to say if y'all have the time.
That's great, yes, absolutely.
Okay, Crystal, would you like to say something?
Crystal, I'd like to say something to you before you address the council, and that is, thank you.
You're very, very welcome.
We came to you with an idea and, man, you just, you ran with it. On behalf of all the residents, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. I appreciate the honor to take on this task. I love teenagers and these are just my new babies, and they are really blossoming and doing awesome things. If they would please stand up, I have a good group of them here. And now, to come before you speak, we have our president of FCYC, Mr. Troy Nance, and our student advisor, he is the student version of me, Mr. Dorian Wright.
Thank you for that nice introduction, everyone. I believe some people kind of stole Dorian's thunder, so if we repeat things, forgive us. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, city council men, women, fellow citizens of Fayetteville, and of course, my fellow youth council members. My name is Troy Nance and I'm a senior at Terry Sanford High School, and I'm honored to be the current president of Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, also known as FCYC. I stand here today on behalf of the 171 youth members from across Cumberland Fayetteville area. And today, we have around 30 members here with us during the week. That says just a little bit of what our youth council is today. I have the honor and privilege of coming up here and telling you the many accomplishments that our youth council has done over the past six months. Our youth council, despite the fact that we were formed in November of 2014, we are making great strides on the local, state, and national level. Our influence has been great and we have more to come. In January of 2015, our council took many first steps to include the election of our executive board, which includes 20 members from all and many public high schools as well as private. We can also see that in January, a few members stepped up from our youth council and formed our very first committee, the Anti-Bullying Committee. In just three short months, the beginning of March, this committee formed a PSA on the effects of anti-bullying in our community. And currently, you can view this on our City of Fayetteville YouTube channel whenever you would like. This PSA has taken great strides in showing what our community, what our youth are doing to be the change in the community. We can clearly see that our youth council is currently working towards our next step, the step of becoming a state-chartered youth council. To become a state-chartered youth council, many tasks must be put in place. We have to meet many qualifications, and we did just that this past weekend by attending the Youth Legislative Assembly in Raleigh, North Carolina. Through this, we had nine members come in, they took advantage of the legislation process, drafted bills, and debated on bills for North Carolina. We had the honor and privilege of having two delegates win an amazing award for their committees. We can clearly see that the youth council members of Fayetteville, North Carolina are clearly making a presence in the state. To go on to the national level, as Ms. Councilwoman Jensen said, we sent 19 members to Washington, D.C. Out of the 200 that were there for youth, we made an impact. From our day one there, we stood up and we made the change. Our youth council is now making new strides in our community by planning a senior citizen prom in April. This is going to be a part of the Global Youth Service Day, the National Global Movement. Once we do that, we feel that we are ready to take on the state youth council in April and become a chartered organization. We, in April, will send two youth, excuse me, 10 youth members to make a presentation of why we feel we should be a state-chartered youth council, and we hope, we know, we will be successful on your behalf. I wholeheartedly, excuse me, I wholeheartedly thank all those supporters from day one to include the mayor, city council members, and everyone involved. We have taken your idea of youth getting involved in our community and we have run with it, as Mayor Robinson already said. We are laying the foundation for our youth for many years to come, and we hope that in the future, Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council will stand for the next 10, 20, 30 years. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Mayor Robinson, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm Dorian Cheney-Wright, I'm a senior at E. Smith High School, and I serve as the youth chair for the Fayetteville Youth Council, Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. And I will be giving you the kind of debriefing of our trip to DC.
What school do you attend, Dorian?
Ezekiel Ezra Smith High School, where I serve as the student body president.
Thank you.
The home of the Golden Bulls. On behalf of Ms. Crystal, FCYC advisor, and the members of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, I want to thank you all for allowing youth council to attend this year's National League of Cities Annual Congressional Convention. We enjoyed every second we were there together, from the early morning departures to the late-night yoga sessions that Ms. Crystal put together to keep us motivated before we have our late-night team meetings. We participated in close conversations with individuals such as the mayor of Baton Rouge, both of the North Carolina senators, Senator Burr and Senator Tillis, and then a few of us got to touch our commander-in-chief's hand. So, like I said, this hand touched Barack Obama. This trip got us in touch with our commander-in-chief. This trip has not only showed us how our nation works, or how bad it is to drive in DC, which Brian over there can tell you, like the bear said, but it also showed us how blessed we are as North Carolinians, but most importantly, the members of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. There wasn't a time that someone wasn't getting to know somebody from FCYC. The pistachio-colored shirts or our gray knit sweater vests or cardigans could be seen at every table in our youth delegation ceremonies. We towered over the other cities, not only in numbers, but charisma. The personalities that have been grown in the all-American city demanded the attention of every youth delegate present. Our councils were amazed to learn that we hadn't been together for a year yet, where Arizona or Colorado struggled to assemble 14 youth, we had 170 and we were strong. With that, we would like to thank you, the city council and Mayor Robinson, for all your encouragement and support for the FCYC. Thank you.
Now, how many seniors do we have in the group? Seniors, stand up. How about you guys coming up front here, because you only have another couple of months with this group? And just share very briefly, we don't want to take a lot of your time, but just share very briefly what school you attend now and what your plans are for after completing high school.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Richard Hall, I'm a senior at E. Smith High School.
Where?
E. Smith High School.
Thank you.
Home of the Golden Bulls. And my plans after high school is to attend Morehouse College and major in kinesiology.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Savannah Stevenson and I attend Jack Britt High School, I'm the student body president there, and I plan to attend UNCW, or University of Wilmington.
Very good.
Hello, my name is, oh, excuse me, hello, my name is Joseph Stevenson, also go to Jack Britt. I plan to attend Hampton University on a football scholarship and major in biology.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Genesis Thomas and I attend Southview High School, and after high school, I'm going to Campbell University to major in biology.
Very nice. That's why you're wearing the orange, I bet, right?
Hello, my name is Christina McCabe. I am a senior at Pine Forest High School, and I plan on going to NC State for psychology with a biology major.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Michael O'Keefe, I'm a senior at Pine Forest High School, and I'm an officer for my school's chapter of the National Honor Society. I'll be attending NC State and double majoring in architecture and urban planning.
Awesome.
Hi, my name is Rachel Watson, and I attend Pine Forest High School. And my plans after high school is to attend UNC Greensboro and major in accounting and finance.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Allison Bolden, I attend Howard Health and Life Sciences High School, where I'm the student, current body student? Body president, my apologies. And after high school and 59 more days, I plan to attend Fayetteville State University and major in forensic anthropology.
My name is Nikia Anderson, I'm a senior at 71st High School. And after graduation, I plan to attend NC State University to major in psychology.
Hi, once again, Troy Nance, Terry Sanford High School. I'm still filtering out my final decision for college, but anywhere I go, I plan on majoring in political science and going on to law school afterwards.
And of course, my name is Dorian Wright, a pleasure to be up here again, and I'll be, also will be attending North Carolina State University and to study engineering, mechanical, so thank you.
Awesome. Well, and I know in the coming months, certainly by next school year, those, some of those on the youth council will be adopting those of us on the city council to shadow and to attend a couple of the meetings with. So be on the lookout for some notifications, I guess, from Crystal. And that's just very exciting for us, and we're very excited for you. Thank you for being such a great asset. All right, council, at this time, we'll move into the agenda, and we're at item 5.0, which is the approval. I'm open for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the agenda with one exception, that item 6.08, fiscal year 2016 budget development guidelines be pulled for discussion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Arp, second by Mr. Wright. Madam Attorney?
Mayor, we're on the approval of agenda, and then council member Arp's item would come when we get to...
Would you prefer to do that at the consent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Do you, all right.
Move to approve the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, move and second, is there a discussion? Council seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Thank you, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. All right, 6.0 is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda with one amendment, that item 6.08 be pulled for discussion.
Second.
Okay, again, Mr. Wright with the second, council discussion. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, just want to clarify the item we discussed in the dinner meeting about the February 23 minutes. It would be helpful if council would either mention that it's the revised version of the minutes that would be adopted if you pass them on the consent agenda, or that that version of the minutes just be deleted and passed at a future meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I would amend the motion to reflect that the minutes of the previous council that were approved, that those be deleted, and that the revised version provided to the council at the dinner meeting be added and approved.
That was seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Davy. Council, is there a discussion on the, on the change in the minutes, which is item 6.01? Okay, seeing no discussion, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that is nine to one, with Councilmember McDougal voting against. That was for the consent agenda, with the exception of 6.08, which is being pulled for discussion. Okay. Mr. Arp, 6.08.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seeing that the council was provided a revision to the numbers that were identified in the proposed budget guidelines, I requested that we pull it for a brief discussion.
Mr. Voorhees, come up and let's go over the changes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tracy Broyles, our budget director, is here and certainly available to answer questions. We handed out a change in one item in the budget development guidelines. I did discuss it earlier, would you like me to go over it again, or?
Yes, sir, please go over it again, since we just got it about 12 minutes before we came downstairs.
So on the very, I guess, page five, not the last page, but the page prior to that, about halfway down, the section called expenditures. In your handout, we've highlighted in red the change we would propose, which makes reference to general fund support for capital projects for the extension of water and sewer services to the Phase 5 annexation area, will reduce to $1,897,776 in fiscal 2016, $850,453 in fiscal 2017. And that's subject to update based upon electric fund net assets as of 6/30/15, and $0 for fiscal 2018 and thereafter. This adjustment is based on the fact that annually, the transfer to the city from the electric fund is based on 3.1% of net assets calculated at fiscal year-end. That number has changed with the publishing of the prior fiscal report, and so therefore, we had to make this adjustment in these proposed guidelines.
Mr. Voorhees, do you know the impact this may have on the, on, I can do the math on our budget, but on the PWC's budget?
In fiscal 16, it would be $210,894.
So, Mr. Voorhees, just to bring, just to bring the general public up to speed, this is just an amendment on the figures that were previously listed in the budget, right? Because there were some, it was calculated on some older financial statements, so these are revised financial statement figures, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and these are only changes to the guidelines you present to me, so they don't actually have a final impact on the budget. That will come when the city council determines what the budget will be.
And just so that the general public follows us on what the whole Phase 5 contribution is all about, basically, the citizens are writing a check out of the general fund to pay for sewer water extensions for this annexed area, right? And so this is just basically a phase-out to say that those water sewer extensions can be supported by the fees that are charged by the utility versus the general tax dollars that are being paid. Is that, is that what this phase-out summarizes?
That's my understanding, council members, that the city council, some months back, directed that we phase out the use of general fund dollars, that is tax dollars, to support the utility construction work in the Phase 5 area, and that we do that over three years. And so this is an adjustment to that phase-out. So I think it's consistent with how you've presented it, sir, not to use tax dollars for non-tax work.
Mr. Moan?
Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Question, this is a hypothetical, you know, should the General Assembly file a local bill in the next, well, by April 1st, I believe it is, and the General Assembly either says, no, Fayetteville, you continue your $3 million transfer, you're roughly, or they could come back and say, you know, Fayetteville, you're right, we think utilities should pay for utility projects. Should the utility end up paying for utility projects, and this gets totally phased out by the General Assembly or by a court, do you have a backup plan of what we could use this extra money for? I mean, that's going to be 1.8 surplus potentially in next year, 900 or 850,000, or just the opposite.
I think I see where you're going, sir. So I guess what I would say is, and just to be clear, because of the change in net position, the projected transfer to the city will actually be less. Therefore, our commitment back to Phase 5 would be less, and that's what we're just trying to capture here. If the General Assembly were to develop a strategy in legislation that requires a city to continue a transfer, then at whatever point that became the law, then this guidance, to me, would be null and void, or moot, I should say. If, on the other hand, the General Assembly were to somehow say that we are prohibited from using tax dollars to support non-tax-supported functions, then it would be moot for a different reason and might suggest that we not do the phase-down. I think that we, if we were in a negotiating mode with the General Assembly, we might recommend that we be allowed some sort of phase-down to help the transition, so it's not a sudden change, but that remains to be seen. I think what I would say about the use of funds is, that remains to be seen as well. The council has talked about a number of options. When we get into budget time, of course, lots of things are on the table, and so we have to balance council's interest in additional funding of things such as economic development, crime fighting, those are the top two tied priorities, and so you could choose to fund some of those initiatives. You could also choose to look at parks and recreation facilities, which is another topic that's been spoken of, for the use of capital-type dollars, which would be, this would be an ongoing revenue source, so you might consider them that way. But that, that all remains to be seen, it's for council to decide in the future.
And then a follow-on, you know, should we see a reduction in our transfer back to the PWC for the rest of Phase 5? I believe also in our budget guidance here, with the privilege license tax, the potential loss this year, I believe you mentioned it was like point, eight tenths of a penny on the tax rate. So we could, in theory, take savings from money that would be sent back to PWC, no longer gets sent there, that we don't, then don't have to raise the ad valorem tax rate by eight tenths of a penny to make up for that lost revenue. So we got a bunch of moving revenue streams here in the next 30, 60, 90 days.
Yes, sir.
Is that, okay, thank you.
Mr. Arp?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, so as I understand it, the budget guidance is going to the staff as we define how we're going to approach the budget process, and it's just guidance in that the Public Works Commission will have a chance to come back and provide input, input based on the guidance, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that said, Mr. Mayor, if it pleases the council, I'd move that the council approve the item 6.08, fiscal year 2016 budget development guidelines.
It's Mr. Arp, Mr. Colvin with the second on the motion. Council, is there a discussion? Seeing no discussion, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Item 7.0 is the public hearing, um, public forum, excuse me. So at this time, this is a time that the city council has set aside for the residents of the city of Fayetteville to have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public hearing should have signed up with the city clerk prior to tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on an item that may be on down the agenda in the public hearing section, we ask that you reserve your comments to the public hearing. So when you hear your name called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium and clearly state your name and home address, for the record, please. Then when you see the lights on the podium change from green to yellow, you have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the light turn red, your time has expired. And again, due to policy restrictions that this council has put into place, we are unable to extend the time given. So with that said, we'll ask Madam Clerk to call the first person, please.
Mayor, we have four speakers for public forum this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. Donovan Magici.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Donovan Magici. I reside at 608 Duggan's Way, apartment G, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Alrighty. I'm coming here today to express some of my concern for the youth of my hometown, and to inform you of the upcoming events I plan to have here in the city. If the Fayetteville Police Department agrees to help provide a safer environment for the teens of Cumberland County, I will have the event on April 25th. I have been doing events in Fayetteville for the past six years, up until recently of last year. I'll give you a little bit of my background, graduating from Fayetteville State in December with a business degree. I also have 15,000 followers on Facebook, and I definitely, you know, generate a substantial amount of revenue for my company. It seems, it seems like every day, I'm waking up to a teenager getting killed at a house party because of lack of security, places for them to dance and have fun, and unexperienced parents who do not know what they're doing, dealing with when they have an event for their child. Because of this, our youth is resulting to having their own teen house parties. And because of this, teenagers every day are getting killed, underage drinking has skyrocketed, and we're also having a lot of our teens being arrested for underage drinking, which is causing them to have a criminal background. I'm coming with a solution here today to help minimize these unruly events. On April 25th, I plan to reach out to the Fayetteville Police Department, because as council member Colvin stated, the person hosting the party may also appreciate the beefed-up police presence, therefore minimizing a chance of something happening. I'm deeply concerned about the relationship between the citizens and the police department, as I stated when I spoke to you guys last year, and I think it would be beneficial for the parents to see by coming to my events, the Fayetteville Police Department securing the event, so they have a sense of mind that their child is coming to an event where they can feel safe. Because of my substantial experience in planning these events, I will provide a safer environment, because I know how to generate revenue to cover their expenses for the crowd. Not only that, but to also see, not only that I ask the council members and mayor to see me as a young businessman who only has the best interests of our youth. I do not, I do what I do, not because of money, but because I genuinely love it, and it brings me great joy to see teenagers having fun. But I, what I do not like seeing is our youth being arrested and killed on these streets every day. Thank you. Any comments?
I have a question for you. Will you be charging an admission for your party?
Yes, sir.
So it's for profit?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other comments?
Thank you very much.
Alrighty, thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. EA Batis.
My name is EA Batis. Can you hear me? My name is EA Batis, I reside at 2997 Cobb Parkway in Atlanta, Georgia, and I just want to speak to you this evening about homelessness. I just have three things to comment on. First, I'd just like to commend the council on including homelessness as one of the priorities for this fiscal year. Second, I just want to ask that you give strong consideration for a centralized location concept deliberate- concept deliberating, when deliberated upon the upcoming fiscal year and the budget. Not to acquire or to renovate, but to share in the operational cost. Promotion of the homelessness issue to the public and allocation of city resources already available to the success of this facility. And last, if the city's objective is a tremendous reduction in the homelessness population, then that process begins with a centralized location. By reduction, I mean the population reaching a sustainable self-sufficiency status, and not just off the streets. This is not a new idea, but it's been actually listed as priority four in the city's 10-year plan to end homelessness, which I understand is now handled by the COC. This also is suggested in the Cumberland County's November 2014 Analysis and Needs Assessment Report. What neither publication expresses is that it is only from this type of location, a centralized location, that the coordination of efforts from all stakeholders can begin to make a significant reduction in this matter. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Jerry Reinal.
Good evening, Mr. Reinal.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the City Council, my name is Jerry Reinal, 516 Deer Path Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Tonight, I come before you to discuss one of the items you've already approved on the consent agenda, and that is the Traffic Control Photographic System Ordinance, also known as Red Light Cameras. Several months ago, several spoke against and none for the reinstatement of the Red Light Camera program. There was never a public hearing on this item, and all the Red Light Camera items coming before this body have been bundled in the consent agenda. Tonight's action is another step in keeping this divisive issue below the radar. I don't understand why the matters related to this program, such as contract award, were not presented during a City Council meeting to allow the public to become informed about what is to occur within the next few months. It's very disappointing that citizens were not given the opportunity to publicly voice their support or against the Red Light Camera program. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Iman Iranami Mohammed.
With the name of God, the beneficent, the merciful, I greet you all with the greetings of Aishwarya Malakam Shalom. I am Iman Iranami Mohammed, the founding pioneer of the Muslim community of Fayetteville and Cumberland County surrounding cities and counties, a Fayette State University Bronco and a Vietnam Vet. The state of Fayetteville, we're very, very proud, let you understand. We were here yesterday morning when the almost 4,000 citizens, as well as visitors, and as well as about 100 soldiers from Great Britain participated in the road race from Fayetteville to Fort Bragg. Fayetteville is on the move, but it's not moving fast enough and big enough. As I mentioned last time I was here, we must think bigger and larger and more successfully and have intelligent growth. As the main one who started re-economic development downtown city of Fayetteville, as reported in Fayetteville's paper in 1993, '94, we are very concerned about growth and prosperity and economic development. As a Fayette State University Bronco, definitely. We are definitely concerned about the aesthetic values such as the beautification of our neighborhoods. The one individual who's heading up the collections of leaves and debris, he needs assistance and help, particularly in African-American communities, someone is going around digging up streets in the Broaddale area, as well as the African-American community, and leaving a dirt pile, a pile of dirt, and they're not putting pavement to cover up those streets, particularly in Broaddale, and that's the African-American community. That must be straightened out. I'm recently returning from meeting with the Northern Legislative Black Caucus News Conference in Raleigh at the Legislative Building, where they invited me to speak to the news media with the legislators, and we dealt with such things as African-American young boys being killed, and we're bringing in law enforcement people around the state of North Carolina as the Legislative Black Caucus to talk to law enforcement people. That process has started now for almost four months, we're making a lot of progress. They're pleased to come and talk to us. So that was like the third meeting that we've had with law enforcement people from around the state since the beginning of spring. We're very optimistic, and we're going to show the rest of the country how Fayetteville and North Carolina can solve the problem of racism and stopping the killing of young black boys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I apologize, we have one further speaker, Ms. Wanda McCoy Hunt.
Welcome, Ms. McCoy Hunt.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Wanda McCoy Hunt, and I'm here to ask the council to postpone the ordinance to demolish a property that I own, 536 North Street. I need more time to make improvements before you rule on the house being demolished. Are the reasons that there have been delays, cold weather has been a factor, homeless people have been in and out, and I've had to make repairs, my realtor has. The police reports have been filed downtown, and we've had police surveying the area recently, so hopefully we won't have that much of a problem anymore. I do live out of town, and I've had financial issues, and I think if I could have some more time, it will, it's going to be warmer, the weather's going to be better. I have an insurance adjuster working with me, and I'm going to, I have an alarm system that I'm going to have in the house, activate it. Again, I've paid my taxes and have paid my taxes for several years, and I would like to submit a four-point plan of improvement within a couple of weeks to the council for an extension, and I thank the city so much for working with me so far.
Mr. Mayor and council, my name is Tommy Hunt, and she's the beautiful part of our family. Mr. Hurst.
Hold on just a minute, Mr. Hunt, excuse me. Will you stop the time, Madam Clerk? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. We had a procedural question, I had to get council's clearance, since you were not signed up.
I understand, and I apologize.
They wished to hear you, so you got out of here.
I apologize to the mayor and the council. Mr. Hurst talked about the beautification of Fayetteville, and my wife and I are responsible tenant owners, responsible owners, and the beautification of Fayetteville is important to us. We are responsible individuals by the fact that we have an insurance policy on the home. We're working with the adjuster right now, and we do have a four-point plan, which is actually going to be implemented starting next week. So we ask the mayor and the council to delay the vote as far as the demolishing of the property is concerned, and we thank you very much for your consideration.
And thank you again for adding me to the agenda. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
All right, council, with that, we'll move into the public hearings. That's 8.0. Allow me to read the protocol for the public hearings. And again, individuals wishing to speak at the public hearing this evening should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. 15 minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue being discussed. Each speaker will be limited to only three minutes, unless your group wishes to appoint just one person to speak, and that person can be allotted more time. Time used in response to a question from this City Council will not be counted against your time. Discussion following the public hearing will be limited to this body only unless someone from this council or this chair recognizes you to respond to a question. So when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium and clearly state your name and home address. When you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, you have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the red light come on, your time has expired, and again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend that time. So with that being said, we will move into Item 8.01, which is a special use permit, and go to Mr. Harmon.
And, Mr. Mayor, before we start, if we could have anyone that signed up come to get sworn in.
Mr. Mayor, we just had one speaker for this item, Mr. Charles Gant.
Please come forward.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, so help me God? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only case we have for zoning tonight is P-154F, and it is a request for a special use permit for an auto body repair shop. The address is located at 1509 Sky Bow Road. They'll open the public hearing in just a few minutes, and she'll call you back over here at the end. 1509 Sky Bow Road. To give you an idea of where the property is located, Sky Bow Road here to the west, this is the Walmart on Sky Bow Road, Legend Avenue, the Sonic Club Barcelona here, so just a few landmarks to kind of give you an idea of where we're talking about. The property is zoned for heavy commercial currently, as is most of the area around it, except here at the school. Again, currently, most of the, everything around there is heavy commercial. Our land use plan as well calls for heavy commercial development on this property. Currently, the property is occupied by Allen's Auto Body. They have a new potential buyer that will move into their facility. It's another auto body repair place. They'll be doing some upgrades and expansion, that's why they're having to go through the special use permit, but essentially, they'll be doing basically the same thing on this property after the special use permit as they're doing right now. Just a few photos of the property. Sky Bow Road is here on the other side of their fencing, on the other side of this car storage area. Again, that's just a few of the things around it to kind of give you an idea of where we're talking about. Staff and zoning commission did recommend that street yard buffer be put up along Sky Bow and where the vehicle storage areas are to kind of screen that from Sky Bow and any other public street. Zoning commission and staff both recommend approval. Land use plan, again, calls for heavy commercial on the property, and this is a reinvestment in existing commercial property. Are there any questions of staff before you open your public hearing?
Mr. Colvin.
Mr. Harmon, I was caught to tell end of it, so you did say if there's an expansion granted for this particular piece, what did you say about the screening of the cars from the highway?
Yeah, basically, these areas back here, and then this area here that's kind of bare at the moment, would require just street yard screening, like we typically do on, it'd be just like it would be if it were a new development going in.
That was my question.
Yes.
Counsel, any further questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Harmon. We'll open the public hearing, ask the city clerk to call the first speaker.
Mayor, we just have one speaker for this item, Mr. Charles Gant.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm Charles Gant with Cross Development. I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any questions about our proposal.
Don't see any.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have no further speakers.
We'll close the public hearing, council, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Moan?
Yes, I'd make the motion that we go ahead and approve the special use permit, and that it be approved upon, you know, finding that all of the, all the standards are met, that were in our agenda packet, and that the applicant agrees to all of the standards in our agenda packet.
Second.
Second.
Heard Mr. Wright seconding that. Counsel, is there, is there any discussion on the motion? Mr., are you voting?
No, just, that did include the condition, right?
Yes, the conditions on page 2-4 of this agenda item in our agenda packet, you know, if you want, I could read them into the record if we need to.
Madam Attorney, is that required since this was advertised? And no changes have been made? No? Okay, very good. Counsel, further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous vote. Mr. Arp is away, being unexcused. Mr. Harmon? Oh, sorry, Mr. Dawes, I just saw a suit in front of me, I wasn't looking up. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm pleased to be here tonight to propose the J.H. Colbreath Warehouse located at 159 Maxwell Street as a local landmark. This property was brought before the Fayetteville Historic Resource Commission. They evaluated the property, determined that it was indeed a rare surviving example of a warehouse that is, incidentally, just outside the local district. We sent our recommendations, along with a consultant's report, to the State Historic Preservation Office. They too concurred that the property in question has the architectural and historical significance to designate it as a local landmark property. Fayetteville at one time was a heavy trade community, and in our downtown area, there were several warehouses that supported that trade operation. Currently, there are only two warehouses in our historic district, a cotton warehouse and some very early warehouses that were built in 1831 on Bow Street. This is the only two-story warehouse. A house to be, a house or building to be a historic landmark property doesn't need to be the type of structure that's oftentimes thought of in terms of a large structure, a grand structure, most importantly, that it's rare, and this is a rare surviving example, one of only three, and again, to support the findings of the report, we have tonight with us Michelle Michael, a very noted, renowned architectural historian who's worked at the local, state, and federal level, and we have our commission chair, Dr. John Duval, former director of the 82nd Airborne Museum and the Airborne and Special Operations Museum, to fill you in on their roles both as commission chair and architectural historian. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dawes. At this point, we'll move into the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have two speakers for this item. The first speaker is Ms. Michelle Michael.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you on behalf of the J.H. Colbreath Warehouse. My name is Michelle Michael. My address is 211 West Pine Avenue in Wake Forest, North Carolina, but I am a proud graduate of Terry Sanford High School, so I'll just throw that in there. I was hired to conduct the research and assess the Colbreath Warehouse to see if it was eligible for individual designation as a local landmark in Fayetteville, and what I uncovered was some very interesting information. This is listed as a contributing building within the downtown National Register District, but as Mr. Dawes mentioned, it is not included in the local historic district, and the difference between those two things is the local historic district comes under the purview of the Historic Resources Commission, and any exterior change to a building in a local district requires a COA from that commission. This building is in the National Register District, and therefore does not have that same protection for the citizens of Fayetteville to understand the warehouse and the industrial history of Fayetteville with this building. Without that protection, anything could happen. Having grown up here and living near the downtown area, I would come downtown, and that building is very pivotal and is in a very prominent location and actually anchors your downtown core from the Russell Street. It is also that location on the railroad track and across from the Yadkin and Yadkin Valley Depot, Cape Fear and Yadkin Valley Depot, that afforded it success when James Colberth started his mercantile business there as a wholesale grocer. I mean, can you imagine? Very easy to load and offload the daily deliveries and get those to, those 80 retail grocers that were in downtown Fayetteville at one point in its history. So, this building does merit local landmark designation. It is one of three extant warehouse buildings in the downtown National Registered District. At one time, there were many warehouses, not just wholesale grocers, but a variety of reasons, and we have lost much of that historic building fabric. So, this building is critical to maintaining that history and sharing it for future generations to understand the history of Fayetteville and where we've come from. The State Historic Preservation Office was afforded the opportunity to comment on this nomination, and they did, and they did agree with the Local Historic Resources Commission that it is eligible. So, I will ask you to also agree with that recommendation and make this your latest local historic landmark, and I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. I see none.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. John Duval.
Welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm John Duval. I reside at 740 Victoria Place here in Fayetteville, and I am here this evening simply to support my colleague Bruce Dawes and also my esteemed colleague, Michelle Michael. The Historic Resources Commission enthusiastically approved the nomination of the J. H. Colberth Building. It's a wonderful example of adaptive reuse of an important building which has served this community for over a century. We're very lucky to have smart investors. Our former mayor and his partners were responsible for restoring this building, and today, I'm pleased to say that it serves as the headquarters of our Chamber of Commerce. You couldn't ask for a better result for historic buildings. So, thank you for listening to me, and we hope we get a good result on this nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
We'll close the public hearing, counsel. I'll go to, go to you for action on item 8.02. Mr. Colvin.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I just had a few questions for Mr. Dawes, I suppose. Mr. Dawes, how you doing, sir?
Fine, thank you, sir.
Like that suit.
Thank you.
All right. Well, listen, I'm all for history. I mean, I love it. However, I'm a little torn between how, and maybe you could help me with this with your expertise, how can you, how are we expected to build a vibrant 21st century downtown as we expand and keep the 1950s or 1890s historical rules in place? I hear a lot of concern from business owners downtown in this area to say that some of their business practices are stifled because we're trying to keep an 18, 1900, early 1900 look. How do you build a vibrant 21st century downtown and pay homage to these historic projects like you are proposing?
I think a lot of times, those types of comments circulate around, but hopefully at the next council meeting, we'll be bringing the Historic Resource Commission report before you, and I think you'll be very surprised at the amount of certificates of appropriateness that are entertained and acted upon by the commission. And typically, I file an annual report with the State Preservation Office. We may deny one a year, and for the most part, certificates of appropriateness are approved at the staff level, and if they're major and they go before the commission, they're resolved. There is not really a lot of controversy downtown. Those people that come in for COAs get turned around rather quickly. Just before I came over to City Hall, Jim Pittman with Fast Signs was in my office. He had one sign that he wanted to get approved. He showed me another one. He got that one approved and wanted some opinion on a yet third sign, which we helped him with. So, I think the turnaround is pretty quick. We run a very friendly operation as it relates to citizens in the historic district. As it relates to the historic district, our historic district compared to many is very small. Many of you have traveled to Wilmington and seen the extensive historic district in that city. What little bit we have left, and there's not a lot, needs to be protected. Each of these buildings, as Dr. Duval and Michelle Michael have indicated, have a particular significance. This building, a warehouse building, is a straightforward building, and the only thing that the commission would look at would be exterior changes. It's a two-story brick building. Not a lot of exterior changes to be made. The investors have made what changes they wanted to make. They received tax credits or are in the process of receiving tax credits for those, and that sailed through without any opposition. All of the exterior changes they made were made without opposition.
I'm sorry. Final question that I had, I guess it's twofold. One, once you approve the property for this designation, even if it changes ownerships, you had a different vision in mind, does that designation remain and does that potentially affect potential future uses of it? And two, what are the tax benefits? You know, maybe you can explain that for the public, the tax benefits for this type of designation. So, are tax rolls are growing a little slower in areas where we designate historic because there's some kind of grant back or rebate? Is that right?
We've got about 50 local landmark properties. If a person is, has their property designated as a local landmark, they receive a 50% deferral on their annual property tax, as long as that building maintains its integrity. So, once that building is designated, any exterior changes have to come before the Historic Resource Commission. Most changes for buildings or for upfitting buildings for business are interior, and there's absolutely no oversight on the interior of the business. If the chamber were to vacate that building tomorrow and a restaurant wanted to go in there and they wanted to build additional walls, they wanted to reconfigure the building, they could do that without any oversight from Historic Resources. Of course, they would have to go through other permitting, but we are not involved with that. It would be just the outside of the building.
Mr. Dawes, Dawes, I'm sorry. The building is beautiful now, and the chamber's done an excellent job in the work that they've done, but would that same outcome look the same if we had designated this as a historic building a year ago?
Yes.
So, they would have been allowed the new rails and the glass doors and that type of thing in the building?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Mr. McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've read completely all of the material that was submitted to the council, and to be honest with you, I read it, but I didn't see it as being an improvement to add to our city, you know, another historical piece. Number one, we have one historical piece. I believe we call it Prince Charles. And in fact, probably not been able to do very much with it, the owners. Number one, you guys control whatever happens on that exterior, and as far as I can tell, there is no overriding what you have to say. If you say do this or do that, or don't do this or do that, then that's the end of the story. Secondly, if it's outside the district, then I would wonder why you would want to reach beyond that particular place. Thirdly, if we continue this kind of action, reaching even within the district or outside of the district, it is a loss of tax revenue that will be sustained from now to who knows when. It seems like a small amount of money, but it's really not when you multiply it times the time. There were just so many things that, you know, just did not, you know, I didn't see a real good logical reason for reaching outside for losing the tax dollars. And it also says that we cannot, if we, you know, in future years, if the building is just left there, like, again, using the example of the Prince Charles, and we need to demolish it, we can't. Suppose somebody wants to build something else on that corner that would actually enhance this city, and we're stuck with another eyesore like the Prince Charles.
If I could address all of those things.
Mr. Dawes, hang on one sec.
Sure.
Mr. Attorney, I mean, Mr. Manager, did you want to?
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Dawes may answer those questions. I just want to get in line.
Okay, great. Sorry.
As it relates to the first question, as I understood it, appeal route. If the commission says that something has to be done to a particular building and the owner doesn't like it, they can appeal that to the Board of Adjustment. If they don't like the Board of Adjustment's decision, they can appeal it to Superior Court. If they don't like that ruling, they can appeal it to the North Carolina Supreme Court. So, there is an appeal route that goes all the way up. This property is one building outside of the local historic district but is included in the National Registered District. So, the National Register felt that it was a property that needed to be in the district, but years ago, when the lines were drawn for the local district, it was one building out. And, I'm sorry, your last question was?
I don't know. I just told you what I saw when I was reading it. I mean, I talked about the fact that we have a piece of property now, the tax loss.
Oh, demolition.
You know, demolition and the loss of taxes. I mean, if we needed to demolish it later on for some future growth, and also, there's the loss of taxes.
And I'm glad you brought all these questions up because they need to be aired and understood. The Fayetteville Historic Resource Commission cannot by law deny a demolition permit. They can only delay it. They are authorized under ordinance to delay it 365 days. At the end of that 365 days, if some resolution hasn't been come to whereby the building can be saved, you can demolish it. So, anyone can apply for a demolition permit, and it, on the face value, the commission cannot say, "We deny it." They can, they have to approve it pending whatever delay they put on it. They may put a month's delay on it. There was a building in the historic district that was so far gone, a couple of buildings in the historic district and 300 block of Hay Street where the condos are now, where the commission said, "Yes, let's go ahead and demolish those buildings in order to clear way for some new development."
So, you have an appeal process to that, too?
Yes. Yes, you do.
And the other one was the loss of taxes?
The loss of taxes, there is a trade-off there, and the trade-off is probably one of the most satisfying parts of my job is working with schoolchildren. In the course of a year, I take hundreds and hundreds of schoolchildren through the historic district, utilizing those old buildings as a backdrop to teach our local history, and that's the value of the old buildings, one of many values. Certainly, there's the quality of life, the people that come down and enjoy our Fourth Friday, any number of people that come and visit, children at Fort Bragg and come down and avail themselves of these adaptively reused old buildings like Pierros and Husk Hardware and other places.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Davy.
Thank you. I just want to first thank Mr. Dawes and many of the downtown businesses that's been working very diligently with this transition process. I want to say this has probably been happening for about a year and hopefully, because I'm hearing a lot of frustrations from my fellow council members, and it's frustrations that I hear day in and day out because I have the business owners that are coming up to me from downtown. But I want to reassure to you all that the business owners have been working really hard, and they're coming back at our April 7 meeting to talk about the new changes and possibilities, how we can continue to not stent growth downtown, but continue to embrace and engage growth. So, in regards to this property, I really don't want it to get kind of caught up in other long-term concerns that we have going on. We have different historic landmarks downtown. For the council members that were on here last term, we did a very similar designation to the Tyson property on Hay Street. So, when you have private business owners that come in and spend a lot of tax dollars to, private money, I should say, to renovate the building, I'm hoping that people will have the opportunity to come on Thursday to the chamber open house to actually see the building. I think it's an honor to have something like that, someone taking the time for preservation. So, in regards to the designation, I would like to make a motion that we move forward with designating this area as a landmark. As you said, it's already nationally designated. They missed it by one block or one street. It's not like we're redrawing the historic district. This was a request from the owners, so it's not like something that the city's pushing on. So, I would like to move to make this a local landmark nomination.
Second motion, Mr. Hurst. We have a motion, Mayor Pro Tem Davy, Mr. Hurst with a second. Mr. Moan, did you have a question?
I believe it's a question for Mr. Dawes and for the city manager, and I want to say back in 2010, council approved the latest historic district design guidelines, which addresses some of the outside facades, what's acceptable, what's not. The Historic Resource Commission brought those recommendations to the city council, and the city council approved them. It sounds like what's going to happen in April possibly is that some tweaking of these design guidelines for the exteriors of the buildings are going to be brought back to council for consideration. So, what will probably happen in the next few months is we will have a 2015 version of the historic design guidelines for the exteriors of buildings in both local and national historic. Would that be a true statement? Is that, is that kind of what's going to happen on April 7th that you had mentioned, Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, as you said, there's going to be suggestions, and these are different business owners that took the time to travel to different historic downtowns, take pictures, and this is from feedback that we hear from the business owners. Why can't we have bigger signs? Why can't we have, you know, various things to still make it historic but still bring it up to date, as Councilmember Colvin said? So, this is going to be research that they've, community members have taken the time to do an extent process of research, and they're going to bring back suggestions for the council to look at and weigh in as a possible, you know, vision as we continue to grow our downtown.
And then the follow-on question for the city manager is ultimately, whose authority is it to adopt or amend or update the historic design guidelines for our local historic district?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Moan. It would be the city council. I mean, we have several different programs that all sort of relate to one another and support each other. If you would like to take advantage of the federal tax credit for historic rehabilitation, then you must comply with the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines. Those are set by the Secretary of the Interior. If you'd like to take advantage of the state historic tax rehabilitation tax credits, you would have had to also comply with those guidelines. That program has now been terminated but is in discussion at the General Assembly as to whether it gets reconstituted in some way. I would imagine if it does, that they will, they will look to that, those guidelines as the way to decide if you're compliant. What we're actually talking about tonight is local landmark designation. You don't have to take advantage of the tax credit programs or comply with the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines to be designated as a local landmark. That's something that the council can do under state law, and it encourages property owners of historically significant properties to maintain them and to apply, and of course, councils can decide if you think that they're, that building is worthy of maintenance and preservation, reward a property owner who responsibly is a steward of such property by giving them this tax break. If you don't feel like they deserve some sort of recognition for their stewardship, then you don't have to. So, I guess I would just say that this is a case where we're not imposing a set of guidelines or regulations onto a building. We are accepting an application from an owner who We are accepting an application from an owner who wants to be considered for this benefit, who has already done the research, who says, "This is significant, here's why, and we renovated the building, so would you support our stewardship, you know, with this tax break?" Last comment would be, notwithstanding the benefits that Mr. Dawes mentioned in terms of adding history, in many cases, a well-renovated building will gain enough value over time to actually provide more tax revenue to the jurisdiction. If a building is dilapidated and falls apart, it's going nowhere but down. If it gets renovated, the value could go up more than the original unrated renovated building, so you could actually capture it back. It all depends on how the market goes, and it's part of, part of the renovation strategy for a downtown area.
Yeah, thank you. We've got some other questions. Mr. Art, Mr. Chris, and Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Dawes, thank you for the presentation. I just, and I hear some concerns from my fellow council members, because we've all heard some stories about how difficult it is to get things through the historic, you know, guidelines that they have to do. So I guess the bottom line is, in just bullet format, if you, what's the benefit to the city in approving this? You know, I think that's what, what we want to hear is, how does it benefit the city? Because, and I hear the manager's comment, and I certainly believe that, and I think the building's much better today than it was. But by providing this designation, how does the city and all of its citizens and taxpayers benefit? I think what the manager did say is a very valid point. Many of you remember what that looked like when it was used as a woodworking place. It was actually structural integrity... And I don't mean to cut you off, Mr. Dawes, but just, if a citizen were to ask me tonight, "Jim, what's the benefit to the city, and he wants an elevator spot?", how do you respond to that? Probably quality of life, preservation of our history, all of those are important. All cities that promote a vibrant downtown engage in a very active and aggressive historic preservation program. So you've got the national designation. If you don't get this designation, what's the con? What's the, what's the... There's no zoning teeth at all in National Register. It's honorary only. Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chris?
Let me just say this. Preserving our heritage and history is always costly. If you've got a A model Ford, it's going to cost you some money to bring it up to where you want it. Our national government spent millions of dollars and more than two years renovating that tall steeple in Washington, DC, the monument, right? The value is, we have to preserve our heritage for the children who are coming after us. I was talking to a grand niece that I have, who was born in Spain, and I was talking to her about how old my church was, almost 200 years old. And she looked me in the eye and said, "Uncle, the church where I was baptized is over 1,600 years old, okay? Throughout the world, there are cathedrals, there are all kinds of edifices that preserve the heritage of a people." And we have, we've gone modernization crazy in this country. We've got to preserve some of these things for our great-great-great-great-grandchildren to see and understand...
Thank you.
...what it was, what we've gone through.
Did you have a question?
This is the owner asking. This is the owner asking us to do this. I want to say what Ted said in my place. If he renovates the inside and business goes in there, we'll make revenue on that, tax revenues on that. So whatever we lose on the exterior of the building, we will more than make up for the use of the interior of that building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
There wasn't a question in there, but a dissertation was in order.
So says you. Mr. Wright?
My question would be, you had made a statement about the number of buildings that were preserved, and that, is there any remaining buildings in the sense of that historical value in Fayetteville or in the proximity of this building? My question is, where do we stop? Do we continue to preserve buildings that we feel like are old enough to preserve? Or do we, where do we draw the line in the sense of the image of our city? I know the downtown area is probably the oldest area in the city limits. So I think a lot of buildings are preserved in the sense of that heritage. But my question would be, I don't know, to you or to the young lady, how many more other buildings do we view that may be historical in the future? Or do you have a feeling of that, that you can talk to me about?
Sure. The guideline that the state uses is 50 years, architectural significance, and some history. But the thing to remember is that the commission is not going out seeking out people to file these designation reports. The owner of the building came to us. He retained Michelle Michael at his expense to do the report, and the commission reviewed it, and the state reviewed it, and both concurred. But we're not aggressively going out there saying, "We're going to take over this building, and we're going to take over that building." That's incumbent at a great expense to the owner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dawes. Mr. McDougal?
Previous question, Mr. Mayor.
I guess that's a call for questions, and we'll go to the original motion by Mayor Pro Tem Davy and Councilmember Hurst. Any discussion on the motion? Were those votes?
Discussion.
Further discussion? Call for questions has been called. We've got a motion on the floor, so. Council, last free vote, please. Madam Clerk, that is eight to two, with Councilmembers Wright and Colvin voting against. Thank you, Mr. Dawes.
Good evening. Thank you. The last hearing item that you have tonight is a text amendment that is to modify the standards associated with some separation between uses. It seems to like the very last one, no matter what. The purpose of the separation standards is to essentially protect a lot of the more sensitive uses, often considered children, schools, parks, playgrounds, low-density areas, from some of the more difficult uses, whether it's activities, noise, emissions, something like that, to guide their locations. Thank you. At the moment, the standards are in Article IV, which cannot be taken to the Board of Adjustments. The only way to seek a waiver or a change on those standards is for some of the uses to go to the special use permit process, much as the case you had earlier this evening. There is one set of uses that cannot even do that, and that is the set of uses, on the one hand, mostly your daycares, schools, and churches, and on the other side, your entertainment, adult entertainment, your bars. Those two uses cannot use the, and adult entertainment especially, cannot use the special use permit process. And it is reciprocal. There are usually, you know, the two sides, the more challenging or difficult use and the more sensitive or exposed use. What we are recommending tonight is kind of three-part change. One allows that special use option to be used by any use that is subject to separation standards. Another is to make available to all of them, to any use that has the separation standard, that 10% administrative adjustment that we have. Normally, that's applied only to the setbacks, standard setbacks, such as front yard, side yard, the height of a building. It normally does not apply to the dimensional standards in Article IV. This would make that available. It does set some uses or standards so that the administration, administrative staff, has the guidelines and parameters. If there's any concern, or if they begin to exceed it or not meet those standards, we would say, we would, as staff, not be comfortable approving that. That should only be taken up as a special use permit, so that the council has the option of making that decision. And then the last thing that it does is kind of protect both uses. If, as staff or as council, through the permit process, we were to allow a reduction in that standard, then one of those pairs of uses is now non-conforming. It's sort of within that, let's say it's a 500 separate, 500-foot separation, we allow a five-foot administrative adjustment. They're almost there, you can't see each other. Staff says, "Okay, administratively, we will allow that five-foot reduction." The use on the other end of that is now non-conforming. So what this would do is essentially protect that use. It bought the property, it opened up its business with the expectation, it met all of the standards, including separation. This keeps that intact. It can expand, as it would have planned to have done. Somebody else buying the use, or if it lapses, if it has some damage to it, it retains the right to reopen, to renovate, as it would have done before there was any exposure on the separation standard. So with those three things, and staff believes that it does, and the commission, which recommended approval as well, that it does continue to protect the sensitive areas, it provides some flexibility, it now makes available to all uses the alternative of the SUP. It does have the standards to it that provides guidance on the administrative decisions, and it meets the criteria that are set up for considering text amendments. So we do recommend that you approve the text amendment as we've put it forward this evening. Be glad to answer any questions.
Ms. Hilton, just so I understand, what this does is this allows the city to go, in some cases, beyond 10%, what the code may call for? Is that right?
It lets us use 10%. Normally, that is limited to the things that are part of a district standard. The residential districts and the commercial districts, for instance, all have different setbacks, front setback, side yard, rear yard setbacks. Those are the dimensional standards that the 10% is normally available to use.
So you're saying the 10% would be used to become less restrictive and not more restrictive?
It's, no, it's actually not available at all right now for separation standards.
If approved.
So if you approve the text amendment tonight, we could use up to 10%. So if it's, say, a 500-foot setback, right now, without the amendment, we can't use 10% at all.
Would you foresee that some folks may have to follow code, and then some folks may not have to follow code?
Anybody can make the request within that 10% and put forward, there are standards in there, such as, what is the intent? The intent is minimal impact on the other use, whether that's visibility, sound. Usually, it's, I guess, one example is auto repair. Heavy auto repair is one of those that has to be separated from residential, low-density residential. The reasons are noise, emissions, paint, fumes, things like that. If staff were very comfortable that it wasn't visible, there was no impact on the adjacent area, that the storage, whatever other negative associations there are with a paint and body shop, had been taken care of, adjacent to, or relative to the residential district, which is where the separation is, and it was less than 10%, we could recommend and provide that reduction. So instead of, let's say it's 200 feet, we could approve up to 180 feet separation. More than that, if there was a ravine, or a 20-foot cliff, or something else that separated those uses, and they thought the intent was met, even at 50 feet, they could come to the council with a special use permit and say, "We think we've met the intent," even though it's only 50 feet.
So it is perceivable that you may have businesses that are built identical. I mean, I'm thinking of McDonald's on two different lots, following two different standards, or two different rules.
It would have to be one of the uses that's subject to a separation. So let's take adult entertainment as the most extreme.
Well, I was, I understand what fits in. I was using McDonald's, because everybody knows, when you see a McDonald's, it's a McDonald's.
Yeah, but that's a very benign use. And this is limited to a very small handful of uses that generally have negative impacts.
An auto paint store chain?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if it were an auto body shop...
Right.
Then, in some cases, if they were separated by, if there was something in between them and the other use that was within 10%, then we could recommend approval. But anybody could come in, that situation is available to any of those uses, I guess is the best way to say it. Any auto paint shop could make the argument that they deserve that 10% because of, and we would look at that 10%.
And it's staff that would make that?
Up to 10%. And then the special use permit comes to you through the hearing process.
Okay. Mr. Shuford, do you want to add to that? Then we'll go to Councilmember McDougal.
Yes, let me give you an example that may make a little bit more sense. Let's say we have a 500-foot separation between a church and a bar, and that is our standard currently. Can't be varied, no way to even seek a special use permit to address the issue. We had a situation a couple of years ago where a church was, had started its permit activity and tried to get open in a strip center, and that strip center was 475 feet from a bar.
A little pub on...
A little pub.
Rim Road in Cliffdale.
And it was, the pub was down the street, it's a major roadway, down a major roadway, across a major intersection, and further down the street. But it was unable to be located in that location because of the, there was not any flexibility in the ordinance. So again, if we had a situation where we had a, let's say, a church was on one side of the All-American Freeway, and the nightclub was on the other side, that would be an example where we probably would use our 10% to address the issue. Or if it was more than the 10%, we could bring it forward to you as a special use permit, and you could take action to approve the, allowing a church to locate in that situation. So the intent is to recognize that, you know, it's not to differentiate between similar circumstances, but to recognize that when there are differences, they could be significant.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and fellow council members, this is a much-needed flexibility piece that we need to add to our UDO. I think it would become very helpful. And to that end, if the council is ready, I'd like to make a motion.
We've got to have the public hearing first.
Got to have a public hearing?
Yes.
All right. I will wait.
All right. And we'll open the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. McDougal, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have two speakers for this item. The first speaker is Mr. John Piggies.
Good evening, everyone in City Council members and the mayor here of Fayetteville. We thank the Lord for being here. We thank the Lord for being here, but we want to say that we appreciate the invitation that we are able to stand to address this council tonight, and we're trying to establish similarities with Ms. Karen has said about trying to establish a church in a certain area, and that's why the proposal is here tonight. So we have talked to different people here in town and went through the necessary ordinance, zoning, and everything else, and I got, we got the information that we needed, and we want to follow that all the way through. So that's why we're here, and we appreciate being able to have this on the agenda to address for us, and we believe that we could be beneficial to that area of what we were talking about, because we have plans that we want to just go in and visit, talk to people, and try to get them to understand the importance of good living, vital lifestyle, so life would be better, and then help them wherever point that we can to, in every area. We want to also try to establish a shelter, if possible. We, that's further on down the road, but at the point where we are now, we're trying to just get a church established there. So that's why we're here tonight, and we thank you again for letting us address this council tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Michael Williams.
My name is Michael Williams. I appreciate the opportunity to come up and speak. I'm a business owner, a businessman and property owner here in Fayetteville on Family Drive, and I've had the opportunity to be in business with my father here for many, many years at that particular business and some others across Fayetteville and Cumberland County. This particular place that I have now, I've dedicated to doing some certain things, and one of those things is to open a place of worship for that community, and Mr. John Piggies has decided that he would like to be there. Our situation pretty much meets what's been brought before you, we're eight feet shy of this requirement, and in trying to get this approved, we found out that there was no leniency, nothing. There is a bar in question. It's been there for a good many years, since we were in business there since the 80s. It's a small building, not much customers. It's down the road 490 or so plus feet. You can't see it from my business, you can't see it from our property, you can stand on that property and not see it, not see ours from there. The special use improvement through the administration is what I'm hoping will be approved, and because of that, otherwise, I have to use a special use permit. That's lengthy in process, it's expensive for the city, it's expensive for me, and I think this would help the community in situations like this, no matter if it's a church, or a daycare, or a bar, or something else that wants to open a business, it generates a place for people to work, and ours generates a place for people to have a new life, and can be beneficial to the, to the community around them and to their own families. So I think in this situation, that it would behoove the city council to give an improvement for the administration of up to 10%, and the other avenues that may be implemented in this could be done, but it's, from the standpoint of a business standpoint on it, for me and for city council, you know the time it takes to go through these things. You know the expense that it takes to go through these things using a special use permit, and I think this one amendment to this would help negate some of that in special circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have questions? Mr. McDougal? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McDougal. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I move that we approve this amendment regarding separation standards as presented by staff.
Mr. McDougal, Mr. Hurst, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Item 9.01 is a presentation from the Appointment Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and members of council, the Appointment Committee consists of Mayor Robertson, Councilmember Chris, and myself. Mayor Protim, Katie Ann Davy sat in for the mayor as we met on Thursday, March 5th, to review the applications for the citizens submitted to fill the vacancies on the city's boards and commissions. And of course, we appreciate our city clerk, Pam McGill, and her deputy, Jane Starling, for their work in the liaisons that attended the meeting. With that, I move for the council to accept the Appointment Committee's recommendations, which is option one in your agenda packet for the following, to serve on the boards and commissions. For Airport Commission, it'd be Mr. Ralph Hamilton, Mr. Donald Warren, Mr. Herbert Vance, Mr. John Lewis, and Ms. Nanish Metha. Board of Appeals on Dwellings and Buildings, Ms. Axah Downing. Ethics Commission, Mr. Joseph Levisser Jr., Mr. Stanley Dotson, Ms. Carol Jones. Fair Housing Board, Ms. Krista Leggett, Ms. Lolita Wilkerson. For the Fayetteville Advisory Committee on Transit, fact, Mr. Rick Fitzgerald. Fayetteville Cumberland County Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Ms. Linda Miller. Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission, Mr. Stephen Barnard. Ms. Monica Luongo, Mr. Lee Johnson Jr. For the Historic Resources Commission, Ms. Pat Wright, Mr. Adam Long, Ms. Megan Maxwell, Ms. Sana Mulder, and Mr. Dwight Palmer. Linear Park Incorporated, Mr. James Bowser, Ms. Dr. Larry Norris, Mr. Harry Shaw. North Carolina Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees, Dr. Mary Hales. Personnel Review Board, Mr. Carl Mitchell. Public Arcs Commission, Ms. Chenavia Haddock, Ms. Tekeisha Wilson, and Ms. Sakaro Hernandez Heineck. Residential Rental Property Review Board, Ramp, Ms. Stella Mullen, Mr. Thomas Neal, Ms. Cassandra Hare. For the Stormwater Advisory Board, Mr. Michael Douglas. Taxi Cab Review Board, Ms. Scholastica Ene. Rec Review Board, Mr. Douglas Maxwell. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
The motion was made by Mr. Hurst and seconded by Mr. Mc, was that Mr. Moan I heard? I know it was over there. Seconded by Mr. Moan, with a co-second by Councilmember Chris. How about that? Any discussion on the motion? I heard some fine names in that group. Mr. McDougal?
Yeah, I might be able to answer my own question, but I want to make sure, and I meant to ask this at our earlier, at our dinner meeting, and I just kind of forgot. On the Linear Park, it says no term limits, and I guess, I don't know, maybe you can explain to me why there's no term limits? I believe it's because it comes to an end sometimes, I don't know.
Yeah, Linear Park is in, I think it's its fourth segment and final segment that probably will have a ribbon cutting coming up this spring, but I believe that Ms. McDonald might have a more detailed explanation. Is that correct, Ms. McDonald? Linear Park?
So if it goes on for another four years, they don't?
Well, it won't.
It might want to come by my house.
All right. Ms. McDonald?
I apologize, Mr. Hurst. I don't remember the answer to that question, but I do think it had something to do with the fact that the Linear Park was anticipated to come to an end at some point. But I'll certainly be happy to try to research that and get you an answer, Councilmember McDougal.
Yeah, and if I recall some of that, it came about with a bunch of private, privately raised funds, and it's those folks that raised the funds and participated with the cities and state grants that they remain on the board.
Yeah, yeah, and I have no issue with that, but if we're thinking about ending it, I'm, you know, in my mind, you know, it'll be an ongoing project, because it will need updating and improvements. We don't want to just build it and just leave it there. Let it go to parks and rec. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Mr. Moan? Oh, your light's pushed. You must be voting. I'll reset. Counsel, at this time, I'll ask for your vote, please. Now, Mr. Moan? There you go. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question for the city attorney before we adjourn.
All right, Mr. Moan.
During our consent agenda, we authorized staff to move forward with the demolition of the three properties, and then after that, during the public forum, the Mrs. Wanda McCoy Hunt asked if we would delay. So I'd like to ask what the council's options are here. Do we direct her to work with Scott Shuford, maybe delay for 60 days?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I stepped out and spoke with Mr. Shuford. Mr. Shuford, if you would come up, he spoke with the folks and, so that we would get an update before we leave today.
Yeah, thanks for this opportunity. Ms. Hunt reached out to me this morning, and, or late last night, and I sent her an email early this morning indicating that it was council's practice to go ahead and adopt the demolition ordinance, but that you expect us to work with the property owner if they're making reasonable progress to move things along, and, you know, our goal, of course, is to preserve the structure if we can do that, because it's good for our tax base, we don't have the demolition costs, no lien issues and that sort of thing. So after your action to approve the demolition ordinance is under consent, and after her bringing this issue forward, I met with her and her husband outside, and Mr. ARP was able to participate in part of the conversation, and we assured her that her four-point plan is one that we would entertain, and we'll set some milestones and benchmarks, and if she was able to meet those, then we'll continue to extend the time, and if she's unable to, then we have the ability to move forward with the demolition.
Okay. Perfect answer. Thank you, sir. Then...
I think, as a matter of fact, we did have power, Mr. Shuford, to handle those things, so they don't have to come back to us for another vote.
Right. Yeah, so if Mr. Shuford can work it out, he's got the authority to do so.
I'll keep you apprised of the progress in that area.
You have the power, Mr. Shuford. Thank you.
Well, then, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn then.
There you go.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good night.